Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting on November 15th. The time is 6:30 PM. Please be aware that this meeting is being recorded for use on the Internet and our local cable station. And if everybody could please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first item on the agenda is a vote to ratify Ryan Grady's employment as water technician. Ryan, welcome to West Bridgewater and this room, I guess, the Board of Selectmen. Can you maybe just give us a little brief description about yourself and what brought you here?
Uh, yeah. Well, I went to Bristol Plymouth Tech High School and studied each year. Uh, when I got out of high school, I ended up going to work for a family business in engineering in Land surveying. And, uh, looking to make a career change into something that I can grow more in. And, uh, a friend of my mom's told me about the water department. And I figured I would do some research and try and get on somewhere. And I so I started some classes, um, down at Upper Cave Tech. And when I was looking at classes, I saw this job opening and figured I'd give it a try and see what I can do.
Awesome. That's great. Any questions, Mr. Price?
I don't have any questions, Ryan. How you doing? You doing all right?
Yeah, doing good. Yeah.
All right, so I guess we'll take a looking for a motion to vote to ratify Ryan's employment.
Uh, I make a motion to ratify Ryan Grady's employment as a water technician.
I'll second that motion.
Please just make it subject to physical and drug testing.
Okay. So we'll add that to the make it subject to physical, yep, and drug testing. All right, do we have a motion? Uh, we have the motion, I'm sorry, I second it. In favor?
Yes.
Aye. Thank you, Ryan. Welcome on board. Wish you a lot of luck and hopefully warm hands as we head into the winter. So I don't know how that works, this one is laughing, so.
Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't.
I'm not over my breast of warm hands.
All right, well, congratulations and thank you.
I know the board has a full agenda. I just want to brief synopsis on our projects that are ongoing. I can quickly, I can talk really fast, or you can tell me.
Uh, we'll take it, we'll take if you can do it in three minutes.
So mainly PFAAS, all the piping's put in place, half of the meteor is there. Electrically, they're supposed to have finished today. We just need to tie in the instrumentation. Um, they're creating a screen to hold the meteor in place in the filter. And then hopefully mid-October, late October, it comes online. It's a budding, another project to switch over our new well, which has been ongoing for three years. Supply chain held up the VFDs for two years, so they've come in stock. But I can't take one off and take the other off at the same time. So we're vying for time to get them both done.
Real, just before you go, you said late October they come online?
Yeah, late December. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
You're listening. Uh, we finished all our pilot tests, so all of that data is in. We're moving forward with the Sierra Norman Street project. Hopefully we'll make our SRF for the next October deadline. We've submitted the previous, um, SRF. We're looking for the title search, which I'll talk with David later on that one. We haven't received that back, but we haven't heard anything back on that part of it yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And a warm hands to you as well.
Yeah, I hope so.
Thank you both. Super, okay. Next on the agenda is a vote to ratify Mike Hutchinson's employment as Assistant DPW Director. How are you, sir? Good. The, um, any looking for a motion there?
I make a motion to ratify Mike Hutchins' employment as DPW Director. Is there any stipulations, Mr. Gagnon?
There is not.
No stipulations.
Okay, I'll second that motion. Any discussion? Anything? Any questions?
Mike, how's it going?
Great.
All right, you ready to take on the, uh, the position?
Yes.
You got any words you want to say?
If you need me to, I will.
I mean, the floor is yours. I mean, this is your opportunity, right?
April 27th will be the completion of my 26th year here working for the DPW. I've been involved in reclamation, paving, line painting. I've been in the trenches replacing drainage pipe, fixing basins, replacing basins, putting in new basins. I've also been involved in, obviously, ice and snow for many years. And the beautification and maintenance of our town parks, ball fields, schools, town hall, police file, center of town.
Super.
Awesome, Mike.
So we need a vote?
Yep.
Aye, yes, yes?
Yes.
Okay. Next is a vote to approve, um, the Assistant DPW Director's employment contract. Need a motion there?
Before you go there, Mike, welcome. Just so you know, you have all our support, all right?
Yes, absolutely. So I'm looking for a motion to, uh, just to vote to approve the Assistant DPW Director.
Yeah, I make a motion to approve Assistant DPW Director employment contract.
Okay, I'll second that. Any discussion?
None.
No, same here. So I vote yes?
Yes.
Perfect. All right, Mike, congratulations. I do mean what Mike just said as well. You have our full support and we wish you the best. And, uh, you've got support in this building should you need it. We'll be here. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
He's like, I'm out of here.
Can we start the public meeting early or do we have to wait? Okay. Can we move through other? Okay. So, public meeting at 6:45. We've got nine minutes to, uh, to make through some of the other warrants and Board of Selectmen business. So if the calendar is up on the screen, um, we're looking to review and vote on the first half calendar for the Board of Selectmen meeting and a couple of important dates in there as well.
Yep, so we do this every six months. That way the board and the public has some general ideas to what the board will be doing and meeting in the future. And also just calling to your attention, other dates that the town hall will be closing that obviously has an effect on services such as over the next six months, Martin Luther King Day, Presidents' Day, you know, when the day of the town election is, and so forth and so on. Couple of dates I do want to bring to your attention is that in January. Uh, so first of all, your rules and regulations normally dictate that your meeting will be the first and third Wednesday of every month. However, historically in January, we meet the second and the fourth because the first Wednesday usually falls pretty close to the New Year holiday. So, um, so right now we're proposing January 10th and January 24th. The second date I want to bring to your attention is in May. It is currently on May 1st and May 15th. However, you'll see that we will be recommending to you, you have annual town meeting on May 13th. We're not looking for a vote this evening because Lynda and I will back into it in the month of January and ask you to take a vote at that point. But assuming that date is the date, which most likely would be our recommendation, it is almost impossible to have both the annual town meeting and a select meeting in the same week. Just can't, it's just logistically very difficult to do. So we'll be looking to do May 1st and then May, uh, the following, which would be May 22nd. And then you'll see in June, um, we're proposing June 5th and June 26th. June, there is not usually, uh, those agendas are usually fairly light. Your real, your, your, your biggest workload is really from mid-October. It starts to ramp up in November, especially with the tax hearing. December, you do licensing. In January through town meeting, you're really focused on your budgets. Once town meeting comes to an end, your agenda will slow down a little bit. So June's not a heavy month, but you'll see that June 19th also is a holiday and that falls on a Wednesday. So we will propose June 5th and June 26th. If I just did back-to-back, uh, weeks, which would be June 5th and June 12th, your June 12th meeting would just, you wouldn't have enough on that agenda. Um, so right now, those are dates that we would ask you to approve. But it is, uh, there's no bylaw, rule, regulation, or law. So you can amend and change this anytime during the course of the next six months if there becomes a time conflict.
I don't see any issues with this at all.
So I'll make a motion to accept these dates for the first six months and next year?
You're gonna wait till January, you said?
No, 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 we can take that vote this evening. The only thing I would ask is, is that if you're in agreement on my recommendation on May, instead of May 15th, it'll be May 22nd. I posted May 15th on the, on this list because that's the second Wednesday, but that's the same Wednesday as town meeting. So.
Yeah, so it'll be May 22nd?
That's correct.
Okay.
So it'd be as presented with that one change if the board is so inclined.
Yeah, so I make a motion that we accept the dates as posted with the exception of May 15th be May 22nd.
I'll second that. And in favor?
Aye.
Same here, aye.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, vote to approve the police chief job description.
So this is the, uh, how we standard just description for the police chief or the chief of police position. That was last in 2016. We've updated a couple of little items to it, but for the most part, it's very similar. The only real change that we made to it is that we want to make sure that going forward, that the chief, the chief of police going forward, um, maintains some type of proficiency in Microsoft products or similar. And will do so during their tenure. Uh, as part of our job description, as part of our hiring policy, is that it is our role as your staff is to bring you a job description. Have you approved the job description and approve the salary range. Uh, we then go out and we provide whatever it is that we have to do through a screening committee and bring back to you the candidate that best exemplifies the person you're looking for. And then you hold a ratification, um, um, meeting that night when we do that. So at this point, we're recommending 160 to 170. You will see in your packet, we have received a salary survey of the area of about 15 other communities. And that would be about the right price range. We've also talked to the current police chief about it. So the HR director is on board, the current chief is on board. We think that's the right salary range for the job.
I make a motion to, uh, accept the, uh, to approve the police chief job description, excuse me.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 6:42. Next one would be done in three minutes, close. Uh, next is vote to approve the agreement for survey and design River Street Sidewalk, Howard Street to South Elm with Greenman Peterson Incorporated.
So Greenman Peterson, or GPI for short, is our longstanding engineering facility. Jim Noyes, who is in town, is also on the planning board, is a chief engineer at that company. That's not his company, just works at it. But because he works in town, he does a lot of good work for us and we save some money using him. This year, uh, we are going to look to continue adding sidewalks in town, which is a commitment the Board of Selectmen made about seven years ago. We continuously funded town meeting. And this would be to do engineering work currently from War Memorial Park all the way down to South Elm Street. Over the last couple of years, we did sidewalks using GPI on Howard Street and from the center of town down to War Memorial Park. So it only makes sense to continue the project. Uh, you may recall, or again, um, you, uh, you may not recall, uh, because there was a few, but, um, six months ago, we had applied for and did not receive a grant from the state because we're also trying to do a sidewalk all the way up South Elm. And if you, the Lincoln Street project, that developer is required to put a sidewalk on Lincoln Street. So the hope is, is that you're gonna be able to walk from Lincoln Street all the way down to the schools and never get off a sidewalk. So this is part of that project, so I would ask you to approve this as presented.
I make a motion to approve the Building Department renovation contract with S and M Painting and Remodeling.
Ooh, we jumped that one.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, C.
Approve the agreement of survey and design for River Street Sidewalk, Howard Street of South Elm Street and Greenman Peterson, Inc. I apologize.
That's good, and I will second that. Check and vote in favor?
Aye.
All right. Uh, we can start the meeting a little bit, yes. Vote to approve the, uh, the Building Department renovation contract with S and M Painting and Remodeling.
So real quickly, um, this here, as you know, we've been trying for over a year to receive a contractor that will do the building so that we can consolidate all of our inspectional services into that, uh, into that area. The pricing came in at 91.6, more than we had originally hoped. We will have to do an end-of-year transfer to cover the difference. Again, I'll cover that a little bit later on the agenda. But we've all been committed to this project. It's taken us over a year to get a contractor and this is by far been the least expensive price we've been able to receive. They'll be looking to start the job sometime in mid to late January. It's expected to be an eight-week renovation, which probably means 16 weeks, I guess, the way contracting was worked. But I would ask you to approve it as presented.
Super. Any questions?
Hmm, no questions. I was just reading something. Vote to, uh, I make a motion to approve the Building Department renovation contract with S and M Painting and Remodeling. The correct one this time.
I'll second that.
Aye.
Favor, aye. All right. Um, I'm gonna go on with one more based on what I see in the room. And that is just a vote to approve the meeting minutes of October 18th.
Just to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of October 18th, 2023.
Second the motion and vote, aye?
Aye.
Uh, we'll do one more. Vote to accept the meeting minutes for November's 1st, uh, 2023 for review.
I make a motion to accept the meeting minutes of November 1st, 2023 for review.
And I'll second that.
Law favor?
Aye. Perfect. All right, at this time, it is 6:46 and we are gonna open, uh, the public hearing. To vote on local tax property factor for the fiscal year 2024. Uh, Town and West Bridgewater Public Hearing, Property Classification Policy, pursuant to provisions of Chapter 40, Section 56, in Mass. General Law. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, November 15th, uh, 2023 at 6:45 PM in the Eldon F. Marrero Board of Selectmen Meeting Room, Town Hall, 65 North Main Street, West Bridgewater, Mass. To consider the issue of adopting the local resident, um, to adopting the residential factor and tax levy percentages, specifically the issue of adopting local property tax levy amongst five property classes. Residential, open space, commercial, industrial, and personal property for the fiscal year 2024. Interested parties are invited to be present and be heard. Uh, this was originally done by the Board of Selectmen and Denise R. Reyes is chair. So at this time, I need a motion to, uh, to open the public hearing.
I make a motion to open the public hearing.
I second that, and this is a roll call vote to open?
Not, no.
Okay. So in favor?
Aye.
We are open. All right, at this time, Board of Assessors like to, uh, introduce.
Well, you guys have the breakdown, I assume, correct?
Correct.
Did you guys have any questions on it?
I guess a question in general is, is why did it seem, why did a shift happen of some form of significance away, commercial being reduced, residential being increased? Want to go with that one? Because I didn't get to see this until last night, unfortunately.
The residential growth, if you look on the page.
I think it's the next page.
Yeah. See, don't go back. See the residential growth, see the graph on the bottom? See the residential growth, how it spikes? It's been spiking with COVID. And the pink and the yellow are your commercial and industrial, and they're not growing like that. They're not. Now, it will eventually stop spiking because it is the lots of real estate. But what happens afterwards, I don't know. But in commercial industrial, has been following a track. And this year, you can see, it did, it did climb up a little bit, you know, but not a lot. So with the tax rate coming down, you're going to see them paying a little bit less. Because their values didn't jump up like residential. That's where that comes from.
Okay. So you said that was because of, the, the spike is because of COVID? Or is it a combination of things like COVID, the, the price of homes going up as well as all the new buildings that are happening, the new homes that are happening in town, right?
All the, all of that, yeah, it's like, when COVID hit, everyone expected, um, values to drop, for, for sales to drop. It went the other way. And it spiked up and it's still climbing, but we see it this year, it's tapering off the next year. So, you know, for, for single-family residential. Condos, they still go, so we'll see condos still going up next year. But commercial industrial, they didn't climb like that. You know?
Um, any comments from the public? I guess the back row would be the public in this case. Yes, Mr. Price.
48 Columbus Avenue, at least until December 3rd possibly, but I'm still a resident. I just have a question, and, and, and you look at these once a year, sometimes you forget how it goes. But on the what-if scenarios, for example, if you're at the 1.5 split on the residential side, it's showing a $234 increase. But then if you go down to the post splits where it shows last year, this year, and you scroll down to, for example, here, just an example, the 1.5, it shows a $367 increase. And there seems to be a discrepancy, I didn't have, I, I just looked at this like 15 minutes ago. There seems to be a discrepancy in all rate, in all splits.
Agreed.
It does, it doesn't make sense. You want me to show, I can show it?
Yeah, one of them is for, uh, you want a one to your single family only. And the other one is for everything in residential. But it should be the same if we're using the average.
It does, it, the numbers on both charts, my understanding should be the same.
The increase column, I mean, that's what I'm looking at.
Right, the increase column should be the same. So the, so, like I said, it's a little easier if you just look at one on the what-ifs. So like at a 1.5 split for residential, it gives you a $234.59 set increase. But then if you go down to the chart that just has last year, this year, it's showing 367. And it's similarly different, I think, for all of the others as well. I, I didn't, like I said, I just looked at this 15 minutes ago, so.
Denise, where's the $200 difference on the 1.50 split?
So unless, um, what's in the packet is different.
The dollar change from 2023.
Excuse me, please. So if you go here down this column, you have 234.59. Then if you scroll to the next page.
Well, now I'm following. Yep, now I'm following.
And I, I think those charts are meant to have one encapsulated on one page and then that second.
No, you're correct.
They are different. They shouldn't be. I'll have to look over the, um, the formula.
And I, I didn't look at the commercial, um, I'll keep a good look at that.
So at this point, do we have an understanding of, of which document is right?
Um, I would be uncomfortable, I mean, unless, Anne, it's something you want, but my feeling is based on.
Continue this meeting.
I would continue it. Because I think, I think you'll have to look at that and let us know as to, one of those is accurate. We don't know which one it is, though.
Excuse me, it's the same thing with the commercial too.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm sure it is, because whatever spreadsheet she's using, it would carry that same error. So, um, my recommendation to the board is, is that we continue it. Do we have any, on December 1st, which is our next week, do we have anything scheduled at that point? So, uh, because we have to continue a meeting to a date, time, and place certain, what I would do is I would continue it to December 1st at 6:35 PM. That way we can notice the public through the agenda. And, um, and then that'll give Anne the time to be able to look at it, come back with whatever the correct information is.
Okay.
Sounds good. You have a motion for that, right?
Yes, please.
I, I make a motion that we continue the local tax property factor for fiscal year 2024 to December 1st at 6:45 PM.
6:35.
6:35, pardon.
All right, let's do December 6th.
Well, let me start that all over again. I will make a motion to continue the local tax property factor for fiscal year 2024 to December 6th at 6:35 PM.
As soon as I check my calendar. Yes, I will second that motion. December 6th is the next one.
All in favor?
Aye. Super, all right. So now I need a motion to close the public hearing?
No, because we're continuing it, so don't close it.
Okay, super. All right, so continuing along on the agenda?
It is, it is. I'll go double checking.
And then we'll talk, go in the next week.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so moving along, we have, uh, our site plan review, zoning board of appeals, 405 West Street, expand the car and facility to include vehicle maintenance. This is for Enterprise Rent-A-Car.
Yep, so this is site plan review. Originally, the zoning board of appeals will hear it. And the reason being is because anytime that you have a repair, repair facility for motor vehicles, the zoning board will hear it as a special permit in site plan. It also happens to fall in our Water Resource Protection District zone because it is industrial zoned there as well, which means eventually the planning board will hear it as well specific to the Water Resource District area. Um, Enterprise has been an excellent partner. They currently store a couple of hundred vehicles there. And what they're looking to do is expand their services where they will be able to repair and fix their vehicles on-site. They will not be for retail customers. People aren't gonna go there and get work done. It's just to work on their own vehicles, similar to like Noonan, which is across the street. They work on their own vehicles as well. So it will not trigger a garage repair license. Mike White, a building commissioner, he has a couple of concerns, um, all of them are notable. So unless you have other concerns, I would say that we would just pass along the building commissioner's concerns unless you have other thoughts as well.
Um, are his concerns listed out on here?
They are. If you want to go back to the, go back a couple pages. Uh, go one to the right and one more. So you'll see right here, he has the following concerns. Basically, it's just in reference to code. Um, they have a reputable, um, they have a reputable engineer, survey, design that is working with them. So they'll, they know they can't stamp something without beating code. But he's just making sure that they're aware of the codes that's up there. Because again, you have to be able to collect gas, oil, any of that type of stuff, spills, especially pertaining to the water resource area, but even if it wasn't, that's still state law.
I don't have a particular concern with this. Uh, that area, there's, there's lots of, uh, repair already taking place. I'll trust that Enterprise will, you know, will obviously hold them to code. And I trust that they'll continue to be a, uh, a good neighbor.
He didn't specifically list out what his drain concern is. Is it concern about, uh, like a oil-water separator?
I'm sure it is, because again, that's code requirement. So the zoning board of appeals, though, when they review it, they'll have a peer reviewer assist them because everything has to comply with state law. So I think Mike is just re, um, reemphasizing or emphasizing that that's a requirement of the plans. And sometimes on the preliminary plans, you don't see everything listed out until they get before the hearing.
And Mike, on this, all we're doing is making a recommendation, expressing our opinion to the, to the ZBA table.
Trying to see his concerns.
No, no, I just want to make sure. So if that's, if that's a concern of yours, you can, we can just pass it forward?
Yeah.
No, no, I'm, I'm good. I mean, if it's, if it's, if it's a requirement by the state anyways to have it in place, then I don't want to hold this up. Um, I make a motion to approve the zoning board of appeals for 405 West Street, um, expand the current facility and include the vehicle maintenance for Enterprise Rent-A-Car.
So because we're making a recommendation to them, um, we're not approving the plan. So I just want to make sure that I'm clear because we pass along your comments.
Yeah.
So what we will be doing is we will inform them that you have no objections to the project in that you just echo the water, the, the, um, uh, building commissioner's concerns that all state laws are, um, are enforced.
Sounds good, so I spoke on a turn.
Nope, that's your motion.
Um, the next, before I bring it up, I want to acknowledge a, uh...
Just take the vote.
Oh, shoot, I'm sorry. We'll take the vote, I'm sorry, on the site plan review, just in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
The next appointment is one that is near and dear to my heart. It is, uh, it is my wife. And, um, I just want to make, acknowledge that before we, uh, before we continue along. But the next item on the agenda is, uh, vote to appoint Karen McGo and Ryan to the cultural council. Any discussion?
None.
I can vouch.
You gotta make a motion? You gotta make a motion?
Yes.
I make a motion to appoint Karen McOwen Ryan to the cultural council.
And I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye. All right, next is the vote to accept Michael Perez's resignation from the town communication committee. Uh Mike um and I can't serve on the same committee um because the two of us together make a quorum for a board meeting. Um so Mike was gracious enough at the last meeting to uh allow me to continue forward with the communication committee. So thank you very much for that, Mike. And um I'll I'll make the motion to uh accept your resignation. And then I need a second.
I'll second it.
In favor? Aye.
Weird.
Yes, it is. So correspondence from the public to determine a course of action. Any comments? Public comment period? Yes.
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Just a wave?
Yes.
Super.
Thank you.
Thank you, so you too. All right, town administrators report, oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, I have a few questions I wanna ask you.
Sure.
And I expect uh the answers to be hopefully available by the next meeting.
Well, let's see what the see what the questions are.
Okay, I wanna know what the town is planning on doing with Lincoln Street. I don't need an answer right now, I want them to answer because we elected them to run the town.
Mr. Chairman, can I speak?
Yes.
Thank you. Um for clarification purposes, are you referring to the land that we own or are you referring to the warehouse?
The land that the town owns, of course, what do you think?
Well, there's construction going on there, there's several things going on.
No, that's across the street, that's industrial zone.
The sidewalk will be on the on the other side, so.
No, I know the whole thing, it's going on. I'd like just to know what the town plans on doing it because it's lost tax revenue.
Sure.
For the town. And we we probably have over a million dollars into that piece of property right now.
You said questions?
Second question is, when do we ever get to see a financial report on the golf course? In their contract, they can do it monthly. I don't need an answer on that right now.
Okay.
And then I want to uh, all contracts that have been signed by a selectman who is not a resident in town, are they still legal? And I would expect, we have a town attorney, that he would answer it in writing, okay? And then the other question is, I wanna ask the two selectmen what their opinion is on the town administrator's position to be an elected position.
I'm not in favor of that at all.
It doesn't matter, I didn't, I.
Well, you just said you wanted my, you wanted.
I want your opinion, but I don't need an answer right now. I don't know, does Mike agree with that?
Well, I mean, you, uh Mr. Hobbs, you asked a a good amount of questions here, right?
Doesn't matter, I don't need an answer.
No, but I'm gonna respond anyways.
Yeah.
You you asked a good amount of questions here, and some of these questions, I'm gonna be honest with you, they're gonna take a little bit longer than a month or a week or two weeks to to get a response on.
Yeah, that's fine, pay whatever you want, because I'll be back next month with more.
Okay.
So uh the other one is, do we really need, and I'll just save this for the D P W, town administrator and assistant administrator, we need two of those positions filled?
So just to clarify what you just asked. What do you mean, so the assistant position, is that the?
We got a town administrator and an assistant.
Correct. Uh huh.
And the town administrator's position was put in by a few years ago when we all got involved. But the selectmen did not want a town manager because they still wanted to control, you know, to make the final decisions, which we all agreed on, so. I'm just curious to see why we need two.
So why we need an assistant for the?
And a town administrator, because when we originally did it, the town administrator was supposed to be in this building during working hours that when the town hall was open. Because the two selectmen do not spend enough time, they can't run this town two twice a meeting, twice a month.
Right.
And then the other question I wanna know is, you can think about it and answer it. Uh the Department of Public Works, why do we have an assistant and a director? You know, we originally, a few years ago, asked for a civil engineer, you know, saying to have that position and possibly tie the schools into it, make him responsible for the school buildings. Because school teachers are not capable of maintaining their facilities. They're not qualified. And then the other question is, I'd like to see the town organizational chart with all the state laws that are attached to it updated. We've asked this three or four times and your employees have not followed up on it.
Okay.
And then one more, another one. The strategic business planning group.
Uh huh.
Are you in favor of having that getting back together again? Because it hasn't been active for a while and uh I thought Nancy Maloney was gonna be here, she was interested and cheering it to.
I've had I've had on that topic in particular, I've had a couple of conversations with Nancy.
Recently?
Last three months, four months, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Um she has.
Because she did a great job.
She has expressed interest. Um we haven't sat down to, you know, just in in general, yes. Um but we haven't sat down to uh to iron some stuff out. We got a little sidetracked and busy with some other stuff over the course of the last couple of months, so.
I worked for a big corporation, we didn't take hours and months to make decisions, so. And then uh.
I'm not sure what that comment has to do with anything.
What's that?
You work for a big company and you didn't.
I worked for a big corporation, we didn't play games about taking months and months to.
I've been here for six months, I'm a little confused as to what I've done that.
I didn't say you did anything. I just said that, I mean, it's not a complicated thing to get an answer. But I don't expect one now. So the other thing is, has a firm been picked out to review the schools? We, I mean, you vote, it was voted on to spend one point two million.
So that is that is the school building committee that has nothing to do directly with us here?
Yeah, but I'm just curious if, I was just curious, was it the same firm that picked out, you know, that did the study for the high school years ago?
So my understanding is the first step in that process post the town meeting vote um is to the state now has to approve what has to go through and approve the money because we did look.
Yeah.
But moving forward, I think the next thing that they pick is a is a project manager. Um and I don't think there's another school building committee meeting till January because of the timing of the state meeting when they have to go through.
Yeah.
But I don't, I don't think, yeah, I don't believe that anything's been chosen at this point.
So the other thing, why I'm tri- interested is because the new high school was only built for two percent growth in population. I don't know if you're aware of that or not.
Yeah.
But so you keep building houses in town and the next thing we'll need a high school.
We've met with the school department uh once to discuss a variety of issues. Their issue, their biggest issue with, and I I, this is my interpretation of what they told us. The biggest issue that they have with population is at the younger grades. Um because by the time kids get to high school, they they branch out, whether it's uh southeastern Bristol Aggie, uh Spelman, you know, whatever, whatever. So the high school, the high school grades do shrink in terms of population from, if you take it from the eighth grade to the ninth grade.
And you bring in school choice too, also.
Right, and but school choice is something that we can relieve over time as well.
If you only can pay a certain amount of money to cost more to educate a kid than what you get for uh.
Absolutely.
School choice.
But that is that, but their their crunch is in those lower grades as as you mentioned, as those houses get built and our population increases. It's the younger grades right now that that really feel the hit. Um because we spoke specifically, there's a much higher uh occupancy number in the uh being proposed for the new school or potentially a new school. And.
Yeah, but you, I do realize how much land is up there at the McDonald's school.
Uh huh.
How much, tell me.
I can't tell you, I walk it, but I can't tell you.
Twenty seven acres, so should be plenty of room up there.
Yep.
And there was, when that school was put up, there was a soccer field set aside that never would use, so.
That is all under the purview of the school and the school committee. Um I attended the last.
Yeah, but you had to run the town, so you should.
Yeah, Denise Denise was not able to make the last meeting, so I went. I said the last school building committee meeting, Denise was not able to make it, I went. And that was the information I kinda picked up from.
Yeah, that's fine.
But the next, their next meeting is is in January to be posted.
Yeah.
You know, public's open or it'll be recorded, it'll be on T V, so. It might be.
Okay.
No, there might be more direction coming in January.
That's fine, maybe you can answer us then.
Sure.
Yeah. Okay, my other question is so, and I can't ask Mike this, but I can ask you this. So why didn't you choose to fill Denise Ray's position?
So my personal opinion on that was that when Denise resigned, the earliest her seat could have been filled was probably mid-December by state law. And by the time that happened.
What is the state law, how many days?
Yeah, I don't have it exactly, but there's.
I can tell you, it's a hundred and eighty days.
Okay.
In October, she gave her resignation.
Yep.
And how many months is that till the election? Seven months, so that's two hundred and ten days. And I just don't understand, once you gave her resignation, why you didn't automatically just start to have another selectman?
It was an expense that I didn't think was worth it.
How much of an expense?
About five thousand dollars to do the election. It would have come out to twelve hundred dollars a month by the time the person signed the suit.
I don't believe it's five thousand, but.
So that's the number we have. That's the number we have. It was open for petition, if you felt strongly, you get two hundred signatures, we could have done it.
I can give a petition with two hundred signatures and it could be voted on, but I don't think it's that. Because I know many people in town will sign and you'll have to have an election.
It's your choice. That's your choice.
I know, but I'm just saying that we said it's not, it's a waste of time, but we just don't understand why you didn't fill that.
I think I think what he's trying to convey is that if if we would have ran an election, right? Um ran an election and the person would have been voted in in December, come January or whenever, according to whatever.
And it's gonna be voted in again.
It's gonna have to get voted again, so it's gonna have to be a repeat. So the person that would that would run would have to automatically repool paperwork again and then go through the whole process.
But it's gonna be tough with only two people making decisions because both of you could not agree and nothing gets resolved. That's why for selectmen's position is either three or five.
Understood, uh but Mr. Hobbs, I also wanna make one point.
Yeah.
And I and I think it's it's pretty much in the agreement of everybody in this room that we're all about forward progress, right? Everybody in here is trying to make the town better and trying to improve improve everything that's happening.
Right.
Right, and I think, I I understand you have some concerns, I understand you do have some frustration in some of your concerns and I understand that, but.
Well, I haven't seen selectmen that show leadership or management skills. That's why.
Well.
That's why I think the town administrator, you know.
Going forward, all right, I I mean, we we need to work on progression, okay? So I understand you do have some frustrations, you know, and.
I don't have any frustrations because I'll just move out of town and sell both my houses, but you know.
Yeah, do you have any more?
No, that was the last question.
Okay.
Well, thanks for listening.
Sorry, thank you. Any other public comment? All right.
Well, I I do, I it's more of a quest. Um one of the comments that was made about have you considered having the town administrator be an elected position? And Mike, I think you started to answer that. Uh I'm not sure because you were interrupted when you got halfway through your sentence. So I didn't know if you had an opinion or unless you were gonna conclude what I need to think about this.
Uh no, I I I didn't have any further comments on that specific.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's the dumbest thing I've ever heard, but that's just my opinion, personal opinion, so it doesn't have to be.
So, and I start, I did answer that, just to be clear, I don't think that makes any sense.
That's your opinion, everybody's a lot of opinions.
Right, so I gave mine.
Yeah.
You know, like Paula Bunker just thrown my two cents in now because everybody else did. The only problem with having the town administrator as an elected position, we all know, most elections, it, we're a small town, we all know each other, it's a popularity contest. So whoever gets the most people to show up for voting is the the one that ultimately wins, that's how it always works.
Yeah, I didn't want to stay involved.
And that's great, but I don't, let me finish. So but the problem is, in most of these town positions that we get elected to, we don't necessarily have to have a lot of experience or a background. We get the position for whatever reason. I got board of assessors, I had no experience, I got elected because I was mad. I didn't like what was going on and I ran for the position and happened to win. But for a position like what David has, what are the odds of somebody running for that position as an election being qualified for it? The odds of the person being actually qualified to do the job and bring the town to the level that it's been brought to at this point is slim to none. So to have that type of position elected is silly. It's not in the benefit of the residents, the taxpayers, the businesses. It would be a very silly thing for us to do.
So why do you think the businesses have declined coming into this town because of the tax rates?
No, no, they haven't declined coming into, we still have them coming in. What that was talking about is the increase, I mean, all the farms have been sold off for most of them.
Really have been.
A lot of farmland has been sold off. That's why we're getting a lot of new growth, construction. Everybody wants to live out of the big cities. They're all coming into West Bridgewater, the smaller communities, that all happened during COVID, everybody started working at home. So we have a big boost, West Bridgewater is very popular to come live in. So that's why you're seeing.
You don't understand what the tax rate is, we get the highest tax rate around, so.
We do have a high tax rate.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm just.
So we don't have to talk about it.
But that's not what we're talking about.
Anything else? I'm gonna close the public comment period and move on to the town administrators' report.
All right, thank you. So um first, I just wanted to give an update on the pickleball courts. Um I'm looking forward to this because I think this is something that our residents have been looking for. We went to town meeting, we secured funds last December. Uh we have gone through the public procurement process and we have, the board awarded it to Ramco at a meeting a couple of months ago. We had a pre-construction meeting with them, I think it was yesterday, is it yesterday?
Yes.
Yeah, because Jeff is the chair of the recreational committee. So again, just an F Y I to the board into the town is that you will see some mobilization begin uh over the next month or so. Weather dependent, they will work through the winter. Obviously, if winter sets on in, ground freezes, snow, all those things, it'll be continued into the spring. But sometime in the spring, it'll be completed. And I think again, it'll just be an excellent addition to the town for our residents. In reference to Tal Hall Energy Program, uh we had gone to town meeting, there was too many people in this building that was working without air conditioning. And literally the past two summers, some of our really good employees, but they just, they melted. It was too warm, it was hot, it was sticky. We were able to finally secure an um A C units to go and we went out to bid, um put them all throughout the building and really happy that we were able to do that for all of our employees. We didn't have enough money to be able to do it in that article. So um we are gonna do an end of year transfer, which we'll talk about in a moment. But I wanted to give Mike White credit because he brought something of attention to Linda Torres, my assistant. And it turns out that the state has an energy efficiency grant program. It was only available this year, it's twenty seven thousand five hundred dollars and she applied for it. And although it has not been awarded yet, based on all the criteria, we should qualify, which actually makes up the difference. So um so I wanna make sure that I gave credit to Mike, but give a lot of credit to Linda as well because we continuously look for every single avenue that we can to bring additional revenue into the town that benefits the taxpayers so it doesn't fall on them. So again, that's a lot of money to install A C units. And the last is, I I put this on the agenda only because I thought it would be fair to Mike where he's brand new, um is that over the course of the past six months, we have had to make some adjustments to our budgets, recognizing that at the end of the year, every single year, we do end of year transfers. We move money from one budget to another budget. Snow and ice is automatic, right, because you don't know how much you're gonna spend, so you always have to cover that deficit. But this year, we had a couple of additional expenses that we didn't anticipate. One was in the town clerk's office because we had another election. Um again, and we're also doing the renovation in the building department and with the A C units. Because when that grant money comes in, it's a general fund receipt, it doesn't just offset that expense. So it comes in, so um with that said, I'm just giving you an F Y I that um at the end of the year, we'll be making those transfers. Again, we do it every year, but where it's a new board, I thought it'd be wise to make sure that everybody was aware of it in advance.
Okay. Any comments? Good. All right, at this time, I would like to entertain a motion to enter into executive session, not to return to open session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, specifically Margalardi versus the town of West Bridgewater and the National PFAS lawsuit, the town is a party too. Since my opinion is chair, strategizing open session would have detrimental role in the bargaining position of the town and this is a roll call vote, so Ryan, yes?
Perez, yes.
So, thank you, Ben.